First thing we will do is call to order the 2019-2021 City Council. And though we do have some people that are going to be dialing in by remote, please announce the city, the state, and the county that you will be calling in from. City Clerk, can you please do the roll call?
Roll call. Mayor Garrett.
Present, Lathrop Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Mayor Pro Tem Kanter.
Here, Lathrop Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Present, Lathrop Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Councilmember Medley.
Here, Satake, New York, Suffolk County.
And Councilmember Siddiqui.
Here, Lathrop Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. And now I invite everyone in the audience with the council to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Now, next I see on the agenda that we have a presentation from Representative Kyra Harris Bolden. Is she calling in or is she coming in? That's my understanding. She would be accessing. I don't know if she's present.
I'm on Zoom.
Well, welcome. Please go ahead with your presentation.
Okay, sorry about that. I didn't know. I just wanted people to know where I was. Greetings to the esteemed council, our mayor, and our city administrator. Thank you for allowing me to take some time to address you all tonight and just kind of update you on what's been going on in Lansing. So we are on our Thanksgiving break for the week, but I wanted to update you. So the three buckets that I've been working on are economic development, healthcare issues, as well as criminal justice reform. If you've been to a coffee hour or heard a presentation before, I'm on the Judiciary Committee Insurance Committee and the Joint Committee on Administrative Rules, of which I am the minority vice chair. I was able to get, I think this term, I think there were four bills that have passed the House floor, of which I'm working on. One was a liquor license amendment where if you have a downtown development authority zone, it would allow you to have a special liquor license permit for redevelopment and not just rehabilitation of a property. I also had a bill concerning victims' rights that would redact or it would it would take away the FOIA for a civil for a civil suit if you're alleging sexual misconduct in a particular case. So those are some things that have passed the House. They are in the Senate, and I'm hoping that we can get them done before the end of the year. Would like to also acknowledge that we've been working really hard this term on getting appropriations for the district. So for the 35th House District, for the communities of Southfield, Lathrop Village, Beverly Hills, being a firm in Franklin, of which I represent, currently we were able to get a million dollars for the district, 200,000 of which was designated for Lathrop Village for infrastructure. We were able to get 600,000 for Parks and Rec for the city of Southfield and another 200,000 for Franklin Village. I do want to just let everybody know that we sent out a senior mailer from our office. And so if you are a senior, there's a multitude of resources. But I also just want to make sure you have my contact information, which is if you're trying to locate me, please go to houseteams.com/bolden or you can email me. It's kyra, K-Y-R-A, bolden, B-O-L-D-E-N, at house.mig.gov. We help with a multitude of issues, and if we're unable to help, we know where to direct you. And so just wanted to give a brief update of the things that we're working on. There will be some supplemental budgets. And so to this, to the board and our mayor and to our administrator, if there are additional requests for appropriations, please get those requests to my office so that we can try to negotiate them into the supplemental budgets. But other than that, I just wanted to, you all to hear from me. I appreciate all the work that you do, and I enjoy working with each and every one of you. And please contact me if you have, for the board or for anybody listening. If there's an issue that you believe you can help, we can help with, then please don't hesitate to contact our office.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Next on the agenda. Go ahead. Sorry, y'all, I was gonna say I'm open to questions. It doesn't sound like there are any. But again, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Were there any questions?
No, thank you. Appreciate working with you all these years.
No, there are no questions or hands raised.
Thank you, Koda. So now we come to the point of allowing all of the officials to not only give their comments, but if there's any reports that you want to give out before we adjourn the 2019-2021 council. So I'm going to start from left and work over to the right. So starting with Councilman Ferguson, if you want to start with any comments or any reports that you want to report out with.
Yeah, just one comment and report. So two and a half weeks ago, actually, three weeks ago, I attended the Southfield School Board meeting. And many of you know I'm the liaison between council, Lathrop Village Council, and meeting with the school board. So I'm kind of representing Lathrop just so we can continue our dialogue, continue our line of communication. And I just went there just to express my appreciation to them and also keep the dialogue open, keep the lines of communication open because Lathrop is an integral part of the Southfield school system. I think bar none, Southfield schools are competitive with every school around us. And I believe that we should continue to open the dialogue, continue to partner with them. And they've got a lot of things that they have to push for the 22, 23 school years. We, as a city, should at least see what the docket is for them and at the same time, see what we can do to help them realize their dreams. Because their dreams are going to be ours because our kids actually go to that school, the vast majority. So I would encourage the new council to be receptive to any communication and a joint partnership and a joint meeting with the school board so that we can continue the dialogue and the conversation. And that's it.
Do you want to give your outgoing speech?
Oh, am I supposed to do that now?
Yeah.
Okay. I just thought it was boards, but all right. So after saying all that, let me just start by saying the reason why I did not seek a term, another term in the election process. I have a 16-year-old daughter that is going to be going to college in the next couple of years. So we're going to be doing the college tour, and we're just going to be doing it from this fall all the way back to next spring. So needed to have time to do that. In addition to that, I have not been back to work in person in about a year and 10 months. So the last time I was actually in person working was March of 2020. And the workload is really severe. So many of you know I work in the auto industry. I've been an engineer for roughly 30 years in automotive industry. And you know what's going on with semiconductors. And you understand that the engineers that are in this industry are working tremendously hard to make vehicles globally and nationally are built and sold. So I'm a part of that process, and I wouldn't change that for the world. But at this point, I can't balance council with my day job. So I'm stepping back and hopefully, it may not be the last you hear from me. But while I'm here, I wish to express my appreciation first and foremost to my wife Christine. She did not sign up for this by any stretch of the imagination for the last six years. She has been a true supporter. She actually totally stepped back and did not weigh in in any way, shape, or form on Facebook. And she actually just kind of deactivated her Facebook account. So Christine, I appreciate you supporting me all these years. I love you. I respect you. And in addition to that, I want to express my appreciation to the book club that my wife is in. So even though she didn't sign up, you know, there was a lot going on in the community when it came to communication. And they were so gracious to still honor her and welcome her in that community. So for that, I appreciate it. I'd like to appreciate and thank the following people who actually signed my nominating petition. And there are a lot of people who signed my petition. But I just want to encapsulate the people that really lend a serious support to me. Of course, the banners who live down the street from me, I really appreciate that. Mr. Tracy, who is Christian's 90-plus-year-old father, who signed my petition for the first time in 2015. And he believed that I could actually do good in this community and move the city forward. To Gary Negrich, Kirsty Hart Negrich, Doug Hart, the Klees, the Keenans, Patty and Mike Keenan, Keith Brown, who encouraged me to run that first year, and many others that I can't begin to express my appreciation. When they signed that petition, they knew what I was about, and they knew I was sincere in running. And I had a handful of items I wanted to get completed. And they wrote their names on my signature, and they've supported me all this time. They also gave me hell for it too, because if I didn't do my job, they certainly were here to say, hey, you need to do that. So let me also pivot a bit. So I want to talk to my Lathrop Village family here. This is my family, the council, city manager, the police chief, who may be online, police officers, even Cliff is a part of this family. So including Scott Baker over there. As a family over the last six years. Yes. Yes. So just want to take the time to tell you, over the last six years, you know, we did everything together. And, you know, we also suffered a lot of loss, whether people want to realize it or not. Over the six years, we lost one police officer. We lost the youngest firstborn from the city lawyer. We lost our first mayor's first lady, Jenny. We lost our financial director's father, our sergeant's mom, and our city clerk's dad. And we also lost our current mayor's only son. We also had a glorious wedding. So with the bad and the good, we are actually family. And when I felt the grief and the loss of all of the individuals that I just mentioned, it touched me that we actually went through it together. We didn't do it individually, that many people might think. We actually went through it together as a family. We sent those cards. We hugged. We made sure everybody was okay. We actually placed a phone call that mattered. We made sure that everyone had food, or we just placed a simple pat on the back and said, hey, hang in there. So for me to say that we're a family, I mean it. We are all family. We've gone through it together, the bad and the good, even a broken hip, even falling off a bike, we went through. And through it all, we are stronger, we're better. We have a cohesion that I don't think anybody could take away from us. And I want people to understand that when you sit in this seat, this seat collectively is nonpartisan. It's not right. It's not left. It's a unified seat. When Mayor Brock, and I've served under him for four years, came to council, he came nonpartisan. He wanted to find out what we had to say. He didn't bring his partisan politics to this table. And I think it's important we recognize that. I think it's important that we continue to recognize that and move the city forward like we should. And the bottom line is, we're always going to be family, working together. So let me just start by individually thanking the police chief. Chief McKee, I'm not sure if you're online. Chief and I started out rough, right? Because Dick Maggio wanted to make it rough. So in the end, Chief and I became, well, he supported everything that I brought to council, and I in turn supported everything that he wanted. So Chief, I appreciate the effort. You're actually, historically, will go down as the chief that broke the gender barrier here in Lathrop. And I can't tell you how much I appreciated working with you for the six years. I know it was tough for you to figure out who I was and what I was about. But in the end, I walked the line that you saw, and I did not deviate from that. So thank you for that. I'd like to thank the city lawyer. I think in the six years, Scott Baker, we've only disagreed on two things. We've agreed on everything except two. And, you know, we talked about it. And, you know, obviously, you know, we're going to have disagreements. But the one thing I can take away from our relationship is that you were centered in every decision you made, even before I became a councilperson. Ironically enough, I had a petition, and I did frivolous FOIAs. And I was talking about myself when I said all that, right? I wasn't pointing my fingers at anyone. And ironically, I said the same thing. We are not being heard. And, you know, you guys are not listening to us. I said the same things before I ran for council, identical. And so you listened, nonpartisan, in your efforts to keep the city moving forward. And I want to tell you, I appreciate the efforts you've done for the city. I appreciate the fact that you've been a really good confidant for the city. And you haven't deviated from the fact that, you know, even though it's business, we're still a part of this family. And I just want to thank you for showing the level of professionalism that you have shown. Yvette Tally, I can't tell you how much I appreciate you just being an ear, you just giving advice. And you've told the line when it comes to the highest level of professionalism. A lot of people don't realize how professional Yvette Tally is and how detail-oriented she is, how organized she is. They don't realize that until, you know, they come to vote, right? Oh, my goodness, it is so organized and so detailed. That is Yvette Tally. That's the core of Yvette Tally. So I want to appreciate you right now, and thank you for just not leaving, to be honest. Because we went through a really tough time prior to our current city manager. And Yvette is sought after. She is the benchmark in this area. A lot of people don't realize that. So thank you, Yvette, for everything. Suzie, not sure where you are, but you make more than just those cute little bags. I just want to let you know that. So you've done a lot for the city in such a short time. I swear, it's just been really interesting watching you and watching you manage the DDA. Just a little snit bit of what she's done. So obviously, you know, the beautification process with the flower beds in the city hall, you know, the development of new beautification task force, the biannual cleanup on the corridor, Suzie's done it all. So this is just a handful of things that the DDA has done over the last several years, along with Lathrop and trying to keep it clean. So thank you for that. Thank you for just keeping us moving forward. And I just appreciate everything you've done. Dr. Mitchell, I can't tell you how much I appreciate you showing up when you did. When we interviewed you, I think we kind of knew that you were going to be the person that we selected, we were going to select because of your background, because of your expertise, and also because of the wealth of knowledge that you brought to this city. And it would be not professional of me to not point out the many things you've done over the last several years that we've worked together. So in a nutshell, so you've done safe workplaces, right? So we're doing that right now, maintaining the availability of city services through a pandemic. You've done that. You've brought to us muni code meetings where, you know, we've organized the information and archived it available online. You've also done this remote council. And it's very difficult, as everyone can see, you know, you've got to have a level of organization, done that. You've updated the website, and you know, we've got tons to go with the website. It's constantly a moving target, and you've managed to keep us going in the right direction. Ironically enough, I can't live without C-click Fix. So you brought that to our city and many others. I mean, I could read this forever, but I just want you to know that your legacy is intact. And I'm going to miss you in this position. I really am. The people that you've hired, that's a part of your legacy. And, you know, they're going to stick together, and you're going to go on and do great things. I just want you to understand that when Jeff Mueller was here, when Matt Baumgartner was here, there was 5% of people that just didn't like the city manager. But the overwhelming 95% appreciated what you're doing, what they've done, and you've done a great job. So I just want you to know that I appreciate what you've done and just keep moving forward, one day at a time. That's all I say. To my mayor. Well, I've been under two mayors, and it's been interesting. And I have to tell you that your resiliency and your ability to not take it too personal, but just personal enough to keep it moving forward, it's been positive for me. And I appreciate everything you've gone through. We've gone through a lot of tough times prior to this. And, you know, when I think about the mayor, I think about Mayor Brock, and I think about you, Mayor Garrett. And both of you have been the face of Lathrop. Ironically enough, you're the one that bring the brass to Lathrop. You know what I mean? The political brass, should I say? I mean, the Secretary of State's been here, our lieutenant governor's been here, senators, congresspeople have been here. And you've just been overwhelming, supportive of Lathrop's efforts to be seen, to be recognized, and it should be commended. I wanted to just say thank you for that, and I want to say I appreciate everything you've done. And I started at the top, so I'm just going to trickle back down. Mayor Pro Tem, Bruce Kanter. You showed up on the scene like a ball of fire, and you haven't, you really haven't stopped. You have continued with the efforts of beautifying Lathrop, making Lathrop a more modern city, whether it's infrastructure, whether it's, you know, just walking the corridor and seeing what those parking blocks are about and talking about that constantly. And I think it's to be commended because a lot of people just pass those and say, oh, okay, whatever, it's Lathrop. But, you know, you want good to come out of Lathrop, and I can see that. And I think when people partner with you, they'll realize that. They'll finally say, you know what, it's not even about the individual. It's really about the city. It's always been about the city, and you always said that. You've never made it an individual thing. And for you to not do that is very difficult, especially in these challenging times. So I appreciate what you've done, and I just want to thank you for just allowing to hear, let me hear your voice and you taking my voice as some advice that I've given over the last couple of years. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Councilman Siddiqui, it's been real fun, and we've partnered on a lot of activities, one of the committees. And we've just always looked at the packet and realized, okay, we know what we have to do, as difficult as it is to read through every single line, we've done it. And I can honestly say, we brought our true authentic self here to realize the full potential of the city. And I know that we'll see each other after this, and we'll continue to, you know, just talk about how we can continue to move the city forward. We don't necessarily have to be on council to do that. But, you know, we will partner with the right people and move forward. So thank you for that. Dawn Medley, online, I just want to thank you. I actually never met Dawn until she joined the committee, and I didn't even know who she was. But she brought a level of organization to that committee, and it really reflected, and it reflected in other people that said, hey, you know, maybe we need to have Dawn, a person like Dawn on the council, and, you know, the seat becomes available. And here is Dawn in the council seat. So I want you to know that your professionalism has been tremendous for us, your insight on how we have been navigating for the last couple of months. And even last year, when we had to go through that committee process, I just want you to know that you were way above board when it came to navigating the difficult parts of it, the human-to-human parts of it that may have disrespected some level or another. And you navigated that perfectly. I appreciate it. I hope we can work together again in the future. And hopefully, when you get tired of living out there, you move back to Lathrop, and we should be good to go. But thank you. Really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to try to close this out as quickly as possible because I know that there's a lot of people that want to say certain things. But, you know, I've been your councilperson for roughly six years. And a lot of people don't even know who I am. So who am I? So everyone knows I'm a veteran. But what you don't know is that I went into the US Navy, and I spent six years in there as a Jamaican citizen. I was actually holding a green card when I went into the US Navy. A lot of people don't know that. And so I wasn't a citizen. I was a resident. And I went in there, and I spent six years in the Navy, and I learned a lot. You know, I was already in love with engineering, and it just took me to the next level. And when I got out, I realized that I'm one of the fortunate ones. I didn't get injured. I got a chance to learn something. But there were a lot of others that got injured and didn't get a chance to learn anything. And so over the years, as I became an engineer, you know, I started this program in the company that I'm with now where veterans matter. Veterans that can't find a home matter. So for the last several years, I've been feeding homeless veterans, and a lot of you guys don't know that. I don't have to share it because that's who I am. That's the core of who I am. I've always been this way. I've always been of service to people. I think it's so important that you have to be like that because that's the only way you're going to be moved in the right direction. So that's what I've always done. I've always been in service. 10 years before this, I volunteered in the city, and you knew who I was. I actually met most of the people that see me in the hall now through volunteering. So it's always been important to me to keep this going in the right direction. And I think that when you're honest to someone, it's a thankless job, but you have to do it. It has to be done, and it has to be recognized as something that you should do. Couple more things before I go. Yes, Alan Weeks did ask me to run, and ironically enough, I did run when I came to that council meeting. And so, you know, I went back and decided to do this joint election thing with Mike Keenan. This is from 2015. Yes, we were the first to do the joint campaigning. And I just wanted to extend appreciation to Mike Keenan for still continuing to volunteer for the city and lending his ear and lending his advice. And, you know, he didn't really get bitter about not being a part of council. He actually wanted to continue to help the city. So really appreciate that. I wanted to also ask everyone, does everyone know what the image of Lathrop is? I mean, if we think about it, it could be the gazebo, right? Could be this building, could be our police officers, because they do such a great job. It could even be our city manager or our mayor or our mayor pro tem. But the sad reality is, is that our image right now is a broken-down school, which is right over here. Because everyone drives by that school, and they think that's what Lathrop Village is. And Lathrop is not that. And I know that the owners for this school have plans for it. And I know people thought I was getting played by meeting with them for five years straight, every single day, calling, texting, meeting in person to try to realize some efforts and some renderings, and even meeting with the architect. But the fact of the matter is, you can't give up when it comes to realizing the city's full potential. So I would encourage the new council. you can't give up when it comes to realizing the city's full potential. So I would encourage the new council. Even though you didn't have it on any campaign speech or anything, please continue to reach out to the owner of the school. Because they want to do something good. They really do. All right. So I'm going to just jump down to the bottom here. You know, we do this for free all the time, right? But I, I really believe from this point forward, we should try to find some money to pay the council people. Here's, here's the reason why I say this. You, you're not, you're just hindering yourselves from bringing people that really want to move the city forward. So if you, if, if the mayor and the pro tem and the city manager will decide along with the new council to do this, well, let it be tied to something, whether it's a job assignment or attendance or just try to flesh that out. I think it should be done. I think we should consider it. For example, I have just a handful of examples. Southfield. You know, they've, they've, they have basically sixteen K for their council people and that's divided up, right? So Ferndale, which is the closest number I think we probably can get to is five K and that's annually. We can do this and I think we should have the, the honest discussion of whether or not it should be done. The last thing I want to cut off before I, I say farewell is Lathrop should begin to partner and advertise the Southfield Academy. Because our residents are sending kids to that academy and it's time for Lathrop to say, you know what? It could be a good PR for us to continue to do it and at the same time promote a school that's, that's a high achieving school. We have to do that because we're not going to separate ourselves from Southfield. So I think we should, we should continue to do that and just be mindful that, you know, we're all in it together. So in two years, I anticipate that we're going to have more representation on this council and I'm hoping that one of these representatives that's going to sit on council will come from our Lathrop Village LGBTQ community. Because their, their heart and their soul belongs in Lathrop as well. Whatever they think about Lathrop matters and it should matter to this council. It should matter because their opinions matter. They live here just like us. They're raising their children. And I want to hear their voices on this council. We've already had the most diverse council in the area. It's time to take it to the next step. So if you're out there and you're looking for motivation, this is the motivation I think you should take. All right. Lastly, I'm going to close with a poem, if you don't mind. So this, this should encapsulate everything, right? Is that okay with you?
Sure.
So as soon as I can open my phone, I'm going to put my, my glasses on. And this is, this is a poem that got me through the Navy. This is a poem that got me through engineering school. This is a poem that got me through council and I read this poem to Mayor Pro Tem Cantor when he was hard at work on the infrastructure committee. And I just needed to give some encouragement because in the end your hard work matters and it should be commended. And it should be commended that everyone here should take this to heart. So so the counts, it's not the man or woman who points out how the strong man or woman stumbles or where the doer of deeds could have done better. The credit belongs to the man or woman who is actually in the arena. Whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood. Who strives valiantly, who errs and comes up short again and again. Because there is no effort without error or shortcoming. But who knows the great enthusiasm, the great devotion? Who spends him or herself in worthy causes? Who at the best knows in the end, the triumph of high achievement? And who at the worst, if he or she falls, at least he or she falls while daring greatly. So that he or she place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who know neither victory nor defeat. I thank you. God bless you. I'm out of here.
All right. Well, I am not as eloquent or as complete as this man right here. But I will say that was an excellent speech and I think Ian covered a lot and everyone that he thanked, I thank as well. So there goes that. But and aside from that, I'm going to keep it short. I was, I'm honored to serve on the city council. I'm happy to have done that for the last few years. My goal getting on here was just helping the community. I'm a community member, just like everybody else. And did my best to serve the community and, and move the city forward. So I appreciate that opportunity. I appreciate everyone that supported me and the whole council and the whole city because most of our residents, you know, supported us in what we were trying to do. So I appreciate all that support. And I appreciate the people that had questions and concerns and voiced those opinions as well because that's what we have to do. So I mean, that's how the city operates. So thanks again for that support. And I want to thank my fellow council members and the mayor, the mayor pro tem. All the council members, Donna Stallings, who I, we worked with as well. The city administrator, the city staff. Everyone that worked for the city. I guess what I've learned since being here is that you know, I can honestly say to the people that are on the council and the staff really care about the city and have done the best they can for the city. So I think, you know, well, before I was, I was on council, you know, I had questions too that, that, you know, are people really working hard? Are they caring? Are they doing the best they can? But I mean, since I've been here, honestly, I could just say people do care and they, they did the best they could. There's no personal gain here. People volunteer to help and that's, that's what's great about our community. And, and so you know, as I'm going out, I just, you know, wish the new council well. There's new members on board, which is, which is great. So I hope they can find that level of caring and togetherness that I think this council had. Just make sure you're thinking about the city, put that first, work together, put aside differences, cannot get personal. You know, just try to move the city forward. I think that's pretty much all I wanted to say. And again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Metley. So having been the, the shortest tenured, I think I served one eighteenth of Ian's time. So I'll take one eighteenth of the time to speak that he did. But first of all, I just want to say Lathrop Village is amazing and, and so enjoyed our time there. And you know, as I said, we, we just moved into our house here this weekend and it's been incredibly bittersweet because I love everything about Lathrop Village. And my hope is that, that we will return there. I did want to say that, that I appreciate the, the council and, and the members, you know, who brought me on board. And Kelly, I just want to say that, you know, I, I so admire you for living your real truth. And, and, and doing, you know, your life on your terms. And I think that's amazing. And Saleem. The fact that you're just resolute and you're always, you know, moving, moving forward is just, you know, you're a calm presence. Ian, my God, you're so passionate. And sometimes I'm not always sure where you're headed, but I know, I know you're going to get us there. And I have, I have loved seeing you and, and listening to you talk about things and, you know, the, the three of us going out and, and visiting and learning more about things when, when we did that was, was really, you know, awesome. And it was a great welcome. And Bruce, I just want to tell you that, that I have completely appreciated your passion. I, I would never want to be in charge of planning and zoning. And I so appreciate that, that you spend time on those areas and you talk to people and you do those things. It's just it, sometimes I think what people don't realize about city council is it can be incredibly tedious work to review budget sheets and to review ordinances and try and understand those things. When, you know, Ian points out, we all do this on a volunteer basis. And so that has been an amazing experience. I also want to say that I appreciate the leadership courage that each of you brought to this role. And in very different ways and some in more vocal than, than others. But I would also be remiss if I didn't talk about, you know, what I've seen Cheryl and that and Kelton and the city folks and Scott do. I, I have so appreciated their guidance and their willingness, you know, to, to stand up and, and do what needs to be done. And I think that has been the thing in looking at the citizens and the friends and everybody that I knew in Lathrop Village that was, you know, really difficult for me was seeing people not put the city first in some of the, the decisions, not the current city council and please know, or, or the current staff. But I think there was a lot of divisiveness and I hope as my fellow council members have mentioned that things can kind of move forward and there can be some healing and some growth. And I know it's going to take some leadership courage. But I hope that everybody will, will move forward and really put the village at the forefront of all the decisions that get made. And so while, you know, Ian, Ian has thanked everyone and done a beautiful job of doing that. I had a quote that I wanted to share and I think it probably best sums up my experience in, in watching everything unfold in, in the election and the other thing is that's one that's always of a particular strength to me. And I humbly offer it up to Kelly as, as she goes on her journey. And it's by Maya Angelo and it says, I can be changed by what happens to me, but I refuse to be reduced by it. And so that is something that I think all of us can kind of put you know, in our back pocket and take with us as we go. Because I know each of you has brought incredible strength and passion to this work. And I just thank you for the ability that you brought me along at, at, you know, the end and allowed me to learn so much from the work you were doing, to learn so much from our, our passionate citizens in Lathrop Village. And just to be a small part of, of the work that got done. So for that, I am incredibly, incredibly grateful. So thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I, I'm not leaving, but good advice. I think everybody knows that, but I, I will say that I'm going to miss working with everybody. I think we've built a phenomenal team here between our council and our administrative staff. It's been an honor to serve with, with everybody. It's, you know, we don't always disagree and sometimes we actually vehemently disagree. But it's always been respectful, always, which has been a pleasure to work under. The support that I've received from everybody up here and, and the staff in the office has been incredible, especially over the two years when I spending my entire life on infrastructure and roads and every day had a new question or had a new idea that Scott would immediately shoot down because it was against the law for one reason or the other. And then Cheryl would help me brainstorm with new ideas. The council would help me brainstorm with new ideas. Pam would help me with the, the financing aspect of things and then help me learn the, the just incredible labyrinth of rules that are out there for doing these kinds of projects. So it was, it was beneficial to me. It was beneficial to the city. I appreciate everybody's support. And as I said, I'm just, I'm going to miss everybody who's no longer going to be here. And hopefully I'm the new excited to get working with, with them and eventually our new city administrator. And what was I supposed to say? That, that was in the packet. Sorry. But you know, and, and, and build the same kind of relationship over, over the next council. So we can continue to get things done. I think this council having lived here for over, well over thirty years, I, I can't remember a council who has got as much stuff done. Is this council, you know, infrastructure, roads? We've updated our ordinances. We put in together procedures and policies. We have you know, a lot of new communication tools like the newsletter and, and things like that. So I just think it's been a, a really good ride for the last two years. I think we've, we've got a lot to be proud of and hopefully we will move forward, move forward in there. Also, also I should probably thank my wife.
Yes.
So, you know, she's, she's wondering, why are you doing this all again? I have to hear about this every, every day for the next four years again. And and you know, she's been, she's been great and helpful. Like when, when I wake up at two o'clock in the morning and wake her up going downstairs because I have a new idea on how to figure something, something out for the city and but she's, she's put up with a lot and I, I appreciate her support. Yeah. So thank you everybody.
Well, I don't even know, beginning to know what to say at this point because so much has been taken, taken from me already. I will say that this has been a, a great council to work with. The one thing that we had all agreed upon was the fact of getting stuff done. And I think that we did get a lot of things done. A couple of things are still hanging out. One's still in the, the packet tonight. But the one thing that I've also been hearing is that we, we became a family. And if you were here before this council, you know that, that our family was a little broken. And that it was, we were able to bring that back in. That's one thing that I do like about living in the city is the fact that it does feel like family. And I did not realize how much it felt like family until more recently. And though we reminded me in the fact of, you know, you can bicker, you can be in arguments, go whatever, but when it came to something serious that happened, your family comes together and the overwhelming support that I've received still in the last couple of weeks, last three weeks has been sincerely heartwarming because I mean, I opened cards and wasn't expecting cards from, you know, particular people because I just, just didn't think they helped me any way possible. But I love the fact that any disagreements that you, we had, you put it to the side because it was, you know, still a terrible nightmare that we walk every single day, but we show up and we do what we have to do. The one thing I can say is that I do love my city. I did have that challenge where someone did ask me, did I care? And I have to say, you know, I'm sleeping in hospital chairs, waking up and coming to whatever was going on in Lathrop, just to make sure I showed up. And I never told you where I was coming from ever. So that doesn't show you, you know, my amount of how much I cared about the city. I can't tell you any different. I think that we are a city that's right on the cusp, was doing something big. I don't know what that big is. I don't know if it's are we on the right track of what we're doing right now? Or is this going to be something else? Because this is, this is a main thoroughfare that the city has all around us. How can we not be noticed? And you're right, Ian, the one thing that I wanted people to know is Lathrop is on the map. You know, and that was very important to me. And I am very thrilled to have, you know, the lieutenant, lieutenant governor come here, but not only the governor did come here also. And I don't recall any governors coming here before, but that's because it was just very important for me to let them know small communities need the attentions, the attention also. The people that work here, the effort that has been made, it's amazing between Pam and with Cheryl, just the, what you've done over and above. I've driven by here in the nights that I've seen your cars here. I, I just wonder every now and then, does anybody else notice these, these cars while you are doing your Friday or Saturday night thing? Whatever that may be, but they're parked in the, the lot, trying to get things done for us. And I, I really, really appreciate that. And though you weren't supposed to say it, I'm very, very I don't know if the right word is hurt, but saddened to see you go because regardless of whatever anyone else may think, regardless of what the, the thoughts are, you did a hell of a job of riding this ship. And I can say that because I've been sitting here for ten years. I've been sitting in this, in this seat for ten years, these two seats for ten years. This is a phenomenal city. We have some hell of a people that work here and the passion of where you live is very important because I look at our houses, I look at our lawns, I look at just our environment. It's beautiful because of the passion that each person brings. I look forward to working with our new council. I am open to make sure that we become a family, not stepfamily, but an actual family where we can all come together and see what our passions are and how we can put our passions together to again, move the city forward. So I thank you all for also allowing me to be your mayor. It has been a interesting ride. It had its bumps and bruises, but you know, just like what Dawn said, I, I like what you said because resilience actually should be my middle name because baby, I can take a bump in hits and I just keep on ticking for some reason. So I thank you all so much for this council for the twenty nineteen to, no, this is not, yeah, the twenty nineteen to the twenty So I thank you all so much for this council for the 2019 to, no, this is not, yeah, the 2019 to the 2021. This was a very funny council. I thought if I hurt bumper blocks one more time, we would lose on Mayor Pro Tim and I would be in prison because I was so sick of hearing bumper blocks.
You'll hear it again.
I'm sure.
You'll hear it again.
So, and Scott, you know, that's all I can say. You know, we, unfortunately, we are trauma bonded forever. And thank you, Donna Stallings, for your time here and hated to see you leave and I hope that everything in your life is well. So with that, if no one else has anything else to say.
I do. Thank you, Pam. God bless. I really appreciate it.
I really hope we can ride that on the first scooter.
Yeah.
And I mean, and I'll give it to you all on the ends, if you want to say something, two minutes, two, three minutes, if you would like to say anything before we, I asked for a motion to adjourn.
I just want to thank everybody on this council. The Senate's been echoed repeatedly, but it's very professional. Oftentimes having differences of opinions, but working towards that common goal and putting the city first. An excellent job with that. And likewise, my fellow staff members, tireless, tireless, thankless hours. So it's been, it's been a pleasure to work with everyone here and looking forward to continuing that, moving the city forward.
Thank you. Anything down there?
I want to thank and applaud each of you. People often forget that you are doing volunteer service. And, and you put a tremendous amount of time and effort and passion into the work that you do. And I just want to personally thank each of you for that and for also giving me the opportunity to work alongside you and moving things in a very, very positive direction. And I'm confident that things will continue in that vein. But thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you. And I also want to thank this council for helping me through the bumps and bruises when I was being acting city administrator and treasurer for like the time that I did that. I really appreciate your help and understanding. So I really want to thank you guys and I really appreciate you working with you during that time. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Well, I would take a motion to adjourn, sign and die for the 2019, 2021 council.
There's a motion to adjourn, sign, die, second.
It's been moved and seconded and we are now adjourned. Get out those seats.
Mayor, if we could take about a five minute review.
Yeah.
I was going to, it smokes for itself.
Now you put your mask on after everybody's leaving.
Goodbye.
Cheryl, they should take their nameplates.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. You sure you don't, you don't want it? I'm famous now.
Maybe.
Okay, so they should be brought in.
Yeah, whoever has sports, the Mac in there.
So.
Yes, they have the sign. They have the sign. Yeah, they sit and their guests jam out.
Pretty good. How are you?
Oh, just a big deal. Well, they might want to do their. It's not as like popping circles can't be. Our vet's not here though. Are they going to have to like?
Okay, camera wise, what is the best way for them to actually do their oath? They can do it up here? I haven't. Or they can do it under the seat.
That camera there. So if they could stand in front of the podium, that would probably be the best of that.
Okay. You want the podium?
No. No, it just gets more than standing about in this area.
Where they physically stand to do the oath.
This is an open awesome.
Everyone is aware as well, we are still live on Facebook.
You should put it over here.
But you're going to bring the oath out.
Yep. Yeah, I'm just going to stand over here. Yep.
The city of Lathrop Village. Well, sweet. So it'll be Jalen, you. No, Jalen either. Yep. Jalen's first and you're going to stay here.
Barb.
And then.
Karen.
Okay. One more minute.
I'm here.
Okay, we're just waiting for the cameraman for the countdown.
Okay.
Is that Facebook Live?
Yeah.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
The meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Facebook Live.
Yes. Okay.
Just started.
So I still have rules. I'm starting in a couple of minutes.
Yeah, am I waiting on anything?
We're not here. I think everybody's ready.
Okay.
Camera guy is ready.
Yeah.
Probably has a name.
Camera guy.
You actually bring them all in, don't you?
One at a time.
Okay.
So on your countdown, the clerk will call the meeting to order.
She's, okay, that's all I'm gonna make sure. Do what?
Bring them all in. Bring them all in and have them sit.
Yeah, but you have some extra chairs. They can all come in.
So they can stand for the two minutes? All right, that's fine.
Yeah.
Could mark the price for it this way.
I know.
All right.
Okay, I'm ready.
Okay, Yvette.
We're ready. Okay. I'd like to call to order the 2021, 2023 city council meeting. It is eight oh seven PM. In the first order of business, I would like to announce the election results of the November 2nd, 2021 election. And I'm just going to announce them all and then I will administer the oath to the council elect. There was Mark Dysec, he received 354 votes. Jalen Jennings received 767 votes. Bruce Cantor received 994 votes. Karen Miller received 717 votes. Celine Sadiqi received 459 votes. And we had a write-in of Marvin Moore. He received 242 votes. Now for the term that's ending November 13th, 2023. Barbara Canes received 868 votes. And Greg Rovolo II was a write-in candidate. He received 249 votes. At this time, I would like to administer the oath of office in alphabetical order. First will be Mr. Jalen C. James. Good evening. If you could raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I.
I.
And then you announce your name.
Jalen Jennings.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter of the City of Lathrop Village.
The Charter of the City of Lathrop Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathrop Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathrop Village.
And I will discharge my duties of city council.
And I will discharge my duties of city council.
For the City of Lathrop Village, Michigan.
For the City of Lathrop Village, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. There will be an oath for you to find. Congratulations. You're all set. Welcome.
Yeah, Doc, Bruce, that, Scott, you were by it the first time. Can't see it. Right, there you go.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next. Okay. If you could raise your right hand for me, please. And repeat after me. I.
I.
And state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter of the City of Lathrop Village.
Charter of the City of Lathrop Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathrop Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathrop Village.
And that I will discharge the duties of city council.
That I will discharge the duties of city council.
For the City of Lathrop Village, Michigan.
For the City of Lathrop Village, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Congratulations. Please sign your oath. Hello. If you could raise your right hand for me, please. And repeat after me. I.
I.
And state your name, please.
Barbara Canes.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter of the City of Lathrop Village.
The Charter of the City of Lathrop Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathrop Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathrop Village.
And that I will discharge the duties of city council.
And that I will discharge the duties of city council.
For the City of Lathrop Village, Michigan.
For the City of Lathrop Village, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hello. You raise your right hand, please. And repeat after me, please. I.
I.
Then state your name.
Karen Al Miller.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Or I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter of the City of Lathrop Village.
Charter of the City of Lathrop Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathrop Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathrop Village.
And that I will discharge the duties of City Council.
Sorry, and that I will discharge what?
And I will discharge the duties of City Council.
And I will discharge the duties of City Council.
For the City of Lathrop Village, Michigan.
For the City of Lathrop Village, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You can come this way or that way.
Okay, the next order of business would be the election of the mayor. I would like to ask for nominations for the mayor for the City of Lathrop Village.
Make a motion to nominate Kelly Garrett, Mayor.
Are there any other nominations for the mayor? Hearing none, there will be a ballot passed down to you. Vote for one person, and then return the ballots back down to the other end of the desk. Everyone take one ballot, please. And select one name, please. You can vote your ballots and pass them back down. Oh, I'm sorry.
You have the Kelly.
Okay.
There's four votes for Mayor Garrett and one vote from Karen Mill.
Thank you. Our mayor is, I'd like to announce our mayor. Michael Garrett. I need to get to give you the oath of office, ma'am. If you could stand, please, and raise your right hand.
I can stand right.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I can see you clearly. Thank you. Repeat after me, please. I.
I.
And state your name.
Michael Lynn Garrett.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter of the City of Lathrop Village.
Charter of the City of Lathrop Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathrop Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathrop Village.
And that I will discharge my duties of mayor.
And I will discharge my duties of mayor.
For the City of Lathrop Village, Michigan.
For the City of Lathrop Village, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If you could, please sign your, your oath of office, please.
I know, right?
Yeah. Next, I would like to ask for nominations for Mayor Pro Tem for the City of Lathrop Village.
I'm moved to now Bruce Cantor for Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you.
Jalen Jennings.
Thank you. So right now, I have two nominations on the floor, one for Bruce Cantor and the other for Jalen Jennings. Are there any other nominations for Mayor Pro Tem? Hearing none, the same process, a ballot will be passed down to you. Vote for one person. And then send it back down to the ladies on the end.
Madam Clerk, we have the results of the election. We have votes for Councilmember Jennings and three votes for Councilmember Cantor.
Can you repeat, repeat that for Councilmember Jennings? I didn't hear that number.
Two votes.
Two? Thank you. Alright, thank you very much. Three to two. Thank you. I will need to swear in Bruce Cantor for Mayor Pro Tem. I.
I, Bruce Cantor.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter of the City of Lathrop Village.
Charter of the City of Lathrop Village.
And the ordinances for the City of Lathrop Village.
And the ordinances for the City of Lathrop Village.
And that I will discharge my duties of Mayor Pro Tem.
And I will discharge my duties of Mayor Pro Tem.
For the City of Lathrop Village, Michigan.
For the City of Lathrop Village, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. Please sign your oath, please.
Well, congratulations to everyone.
Yes, and I will turn this meeting back into the hands of Mayor Garrett. Thank you all.
I will call to order the City Council Meeting of the 2021 to 2023. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Roll call, and I will need everyone to state their current location and county. Mayor Garrett.
Here in Lathrop Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Mayor Pro Tem Cantor.
President Lathrop Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Councilmember Jennings.
Jalen Jennings, Lathrop Village, Oakland County.
Councilmember Canass. And Councilmember Miller.
Here, our Lathrop Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. First up is the approval of the agenda. Would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Needs to be second.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. I have a question on the buffer zone for the marijuana dispensaries. I'm not sure if it goes in here, since you, the minutes approved.
This is just for the, the agenda, that what's on the agenda right here.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, it's only, it's fine. It's only what's on the agenda, what we're looking at.
Oh, okay.
I don't think it's on there right now. Any other?
It's not in approval of minutes.
Pardon me?
It's not in the approval of the minutes.
This is the approval of the agenda.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Canass. And Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Motion carried for approval of the agenda.
Thank you. Next is a consent agenda. All items listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the City Council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion. If a discussion is desired, that item or items will be removed from the consent agenda and discussed separately immediately after consent agenda approval, and it's a normal sequence on the regular agenda. First up is the approval of minutes. Study session minutes October eighteenth, 2021, in the special City Council meeting minutes November first, 2021.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the study session of October eighteenth, 2021, and for the special City Council meeting in November first, 2021.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Now, there is no discussion with there was something that you wanted to pull out of it?
Yes. Okay, what did you want to pull out? The November first, where they approved the application process, there's some information that is, was provided to applicants that isn't, doesn't appear to be correct.
So now, the appropriate way to handle that is because there's discussion desire with respect to that item, the special approval of the special City Council meeting minutes for November first, 2021 will be handled after the approval of the consent agenda. So the consent agenda approval now would only encompass the study session minutes from October eighteenth, 2021.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, so I'll amend my motion to approve the minutes of the study session of October eighteenth, 2021.
Needs to be second.
Second.
It's been moved in second. There's no further discussions for that particular item. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Canass. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
And Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carried for the study session minutes of November eighteenth, 2021.
Thank you. So now, we can go back to the discussion of the special City Council meeting minutes, November first, 2021.
Entertaining motion, yeah, Madam Mayor, for approval of that, and then if there's any
I'm sorry.
Do the discussion.
Okay, what our city attorney said, so I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of the special city council meeting minutes, November 1st, 2021.
I would like to make a motion to approve the special city council meeting minutes for November 1st, 2021.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Now, we can talk.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. A resident brought it to my attention that the marijuana ordinance buffer map does not include Crescent Academy. I reached out to the mayor, she said that it did include the academy and that it was supposed to be 500 feet. It's actually supposed to be 1,000 feet, and if I did a radius around the Crescent Academy, 1,000 feet is 0.189 miles, so I did a radius of 0.18 miles, and it comes across 12-mile road, so it is, it is not on the map that is being presented to applicants. So I'm not, I'm not sure how that can be amended, at least it's not on the map that's showing on the city's website.
So most likely, that's going to have to be under new business, because when I'm reading in the minutes, there's nothing about the buffer in the November 1st meetings.
But the map is part of the application process, I believe, is included in the application process.
Right, and I believe, so the, so the, when approving the minutes, you're just approving what is presented as what was taken at the meeting. The, the map that would be included in the buffer zone, the burden is on the applicant to do the research and make sure that there's no schools or church, or, sorry, schools or parks or other areas that would be precluded within the required buffer distance. Because sometimes, especially with schools like that, they may pop up in a new location or a church or facility, so it is, it is the burden of the applicant to provide verification that their, their location is not, so it was actually brought up at the planning commission, I think Jason Hammond verified that that school is, is in fact operational. They were shut down for a period of time.
No, they've been there for several years.
Well, that, I just relaying what was conveyed by the planner, so, but that, that is, that is an active school, and that is something that any applicant within 1,000 feet would have to disclose on there, so the map is not absolute, and that's subject to change based upon the current uses in the current property.
Okay, but can that be updated on our
Yeah, I think
website, and I'm, I'm sorry, you know, I mean, I wasn't part of the last meeting, so I don't know if I can approve your minutes or not, because I, you know, wasn't here, so wasn't, you know, didn't know where that fit.
Okay, yeah, no, that's something that we can address, but not as part of the, wouldn't be as part of the minutes, but definitely, I think Suzie's still here.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Pro Tem Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Canaz. Councilmember Miller.
No.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Motion carried to approve the November 1st, 2021 special city council many, meeting minutes.
Thank you. Next up, we have dispersment reports for month, for month of October 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve the dispersment report for the month of October 2021, for a total of $730,570.21 comprised of approximately $490,000 from our general fund, $29,000 from our major road fund, $29,000 from our local road fund, nothing from the capital fund, about $33,000 for the DDA, and $149,000 for the water and sewer department fund.
When can we ask questions about this?
After
After the second.
Second.
It's been moved in second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear the motion. Who motion, who made the motion?
I motioned to the veteran.
Okay, thank you. And second by Jennings, thank you.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I can ask, yes, can I go through the, yes, okay, all right, apologize, this is new opportunity to ask questions. I was wondering, the cable television, we've
Can you provide the page number?
Yes, I'm sorry, page 14. CB Studios, we paid $8,122.58 for cable television. I was just wondering, is that the usual monthly bill? Is there more comes up with that? How, how is that paid?
That is for the council meetings being taped, the gentleman working in the actually, gymnastics or cable guy, that is his wages, plus there's additional things, like if we have additional council meetings, different things that, that amount could change.
Okay, so that's a per month amount?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Also, there are several instances where it says card member services, is that credit cards?
Those are credit cards, and we only have so much room, we can put anything on, so we try to pick out the biggest items to put on as a description, but that's all we can do, because there might be, somebody might have had to go get a battery, and it might have cost $3, we're not going to, you know, because we only have a certain, as you can see, a description, so that is what that is.
And then how many credit cards are there in the city?
I think five, if I'm just counting off the top of my head.
Okay, is there a list available of who has a credit card and what it can be used for, that we could have this some other time, I don't need that right now. Okay, all right, okay, thank you. Also, there's
Can I, correct me if I'm wrong, going back to the CB Studios, I, I, I don't think it's that, that same amount every month, I think
No, I said
dependent upon how many activities we have, if there's festivals and
But it is a monthly amount.
Right, comes on their monthly, but it's not
Because we pay them once a month.
Okay, okay. Oakland Schools Newsletter, $2,860, what, what is that?
That is for them printing out, printing our newsletter, and
That's also mailing, or getting it ready for mailing.
The R-Town?
Yes.
Okay, and is that, has that been bid out? Is that something that, do they have a better price for us than, say, zip, or a local, another local?
We were using zip at one time, and I think it was checked into for prices.
Okay, great, thank you. The page 15. First section, administration, we have elections, we had $1,100 for payroll and $2,210.17 for election specialists, I know that was for Angela that was brought in.
Correct.
Was there a contract, what was?
There was a contract with Angela.
Okay, and why is one payroll and one is election specialist, or just depend on different accounts that it came out of, or?
It should be out of the same account, or is it out of different?
No, it's broken out, I guess it is, it's broken out twice in two different places.
It's just some who put it in as a description.
Okay.
When they were doing accounts payable.
Okay, and then in the next section, building and grounds, we have $1,680 to allied building services for building maintenance, is that for repairs or, or cleaning, replacement repairs?
Yes.
Okay, not cleaning, okay. All right, page 16. There is, in October, we paid $33,322.51 to Lathrop Services for public services.
That is a contract that we have with our DPS, for our DPS.
Okay, and that includes, can you get
Snow plow, snow plowing, the plowing of the road, or the grading of the roads, the checking water meters, going out and doing their water reads.
Leaves.
Leaves, there's a bunch of things.
And you'll, and you'll see that split.
Yeah, I see a split out about, through multiple accounts, local road fund, major road fund.
That's all the DPDW.
Is there a contract, a breakdown of the contract, or that's available?
There's a breakdown of what funds they're coming out of.
Okay, okay. Page 19. There is maintenance of sewage from 7:1 to 9:30, $18,750, and then there's also wastewater disposal of $88,068.75.
That is our charges for our disposal of our sewer going out of the city and our water.
Okay, that's, that's a SAKWA?
SAKWA and
And Oakland County, that 88,000, is that something that we've had in our budget for several years?
It might change every year, but
Okay. Okay, all right, and I've noticed this before, page 22, community center expenditure. I've seen that on the budgets over several years, what is, what is
Community Center is anything to do with community centers that we have in the back of their building, and it's expenditures are for cleaning the, for cleaning it. When there's parties, there are things like that. There's just a, you know, if we have to have something fixed in the kitchen, that would come out of community center expenses, anything like that.
Okay, okay, because the cleaning and all that kind of stuff, there's, that's separate, usually covered by cliff, right?
But that is included in
Well, that's in, in that
Some of it is included in there, yes.
Okay, all right.
When he's cleaning up from parties, it would be taken out of the community expenditure.
Okay, all right, okay, great. I guess that's it in that section, and then in the revenue and expenditure report, actually, that's where that was. Page 23. It shows elections, the available balance is a deficit, there are several places where there's a deficit, what?
There will be budget amendments, and when we do our original budget, we're doing it, and that's why we had the vote for it to come in June, because we are on, we don't get all of our figures in by the time we have to have it done for May.
Okay.
We're still waiting on figures, the election, this is an unusual year, and there were more expenses to the election, but we will do any deficits that there is, we do budget amendments, January and June.
Okay, great, and the same thing with the building grants, that's also a deficit?
That one was changed, that one was changed, building grants has been, I did journal entries on it, because there was two wrong things in that account, so that should be zero.
Oh, okay.
And I think I just did them here in November, so.
Okay. Sorry, page 31. Expenditures under the water department. There's a budget amount for 2021, 22, for employee taxes and benefits, and it's 168,991.
That is the retirees.
That's retirement, okay.
Retirees.
Their medical, their pension, things like that.
Okay, and then this water system maintenance, that's 90,000, is that part of what I already asked about?
That is, the water system maintenance is for the retention tank. It's for the retention tank, the Oakland County, we have a contract with Oakland County to take care of retention tanks, so I don't have to do it anymore.
Oh, okay. Page 32. We have set aside $860,000 for water meter replacements.
That's part of the capital improvement fund.
Right.
Capital improvements that we have bonded for.
Right, right, okay, all right, I guess we'll have further discussion about the water replacement programs. I mean, the water meter replacement. Then the retention tank repairs on that same page, 550,000, 550,000.
That's another, yep, capital improvement.
Okay. And then we've got net of revenues and expenditures, available balance were minus $1,411,132.6. Is that?
I would have to look at that.
That's okay.
That's total, that's total for everything, that's your general, your everything.
Okay, but, but why are we the available balance is negative, that's just that money hasn't been transferred yet, or? This is the activities for the month, this is where we are, your date is here. So I'm not sure, I would have to look into that.
Okay, I can get you an answer.
Okay, thank you.
Get you an answer on that.
All right, thank you.
That's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions?
No. I would, ma'am, I would think you're probably waiting on your tax revenue. That's why that's
The tax revenue has come in, but we still have some
The winter, for this budget year, that's why.
Well, the winter won't, because we get all of ours in the summer, but we still have some that are outstanding, yes, and we won't get that until probably April, when we do the settlement. I'll look into it.
Any other questions? Need a roll call on this, make sure we're at, need a roll call?
Roll call. Councilmember Canaz. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Councilmember Canaz.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carried for approval of the dispersment report.
Now, we'll go into our departmental reports. Anything from the DDA? Want to stand out? We don't need a motion to approve the departmental report.
Generally, you take one motion to approve all, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the departmental report.
Need a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second, is there any discussion of any of the departmental reports?
I have one quick question, and it's for Suzie, so she's around here, can you, can you refresh my memory on the, the community navigator program?
So the community navigator program is an initiative, actually, by Oakland County Economic Development, and they have set aside $3 million to develop this program countywide, and essentially, they will be embedding small business assistant staff into eight communities, Lathrop Village being one of them. This person will provide, be providing services that are very similar to what was offered in their one-stop shop, so they'll help with drafting of grants, business plans, they can help with demographics and market studies, and really trying to offer a wide variety of services to our local area, so they will they have hired, this and this person will be entirely funded through the county, there is no financial outlet by the city of Lathrop Village, we will be providing some office space to this individual. Probably hanging out in Cory's office, to be honest with you, and they will be is anticipated that interviews will be in mid-December, and that they would ultimately start sometime in January or February, but that timeline, that, that is based on county resources.
That's great, and so is it, is it, is, is, is the person who's going to be here, is that a give you full-time, part-time? Or not yet determined?
Not yet determined, though I do believe they're leaning towards a full-time individual. And so we can expect that they'll be able to assist us and bring additional capacity to the DDA and city business development efforts. They'll be hosting events here, we'll be working very closely with them.
That's great, okay, thank you.
Any other questions of departmental reports, specifically DDA? Or any of the departmental reports? Hearing none, I'll take a roll, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
And Councilmember Canaz.
Yes.
Motion carried for approval of the department reports.
Thank you. We come to a part on our agenda where we can have public comments from the audience regarding items that's on the agenda. And speakers are limited to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
There are no hands raised at this time, Mayor Garrett.
Hey, 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 hey. Yes, I want to speak. This is Rob.
Okay, so is this gonna, it's gonna be, you want to speak about something that's on the agenda?
I do. This is Rob Tamorelli. Are you speaking to me?
Yes.
Yes, I have a brief PowerPoint presentation should last a little over two minutes, so I'd like to share my screen.
Are we sure we're not? What do we just say about the whole electronics and sharing the screen onto the Zoom on the city?
Generally, it's not permissible to, I mean, an individual can address the council during the public comment if they wanted to make a presentation. Generally, they would want to work that out beforehand, so the city can go through that, make sure there's no issues. I'm not sure what what the gentleman wishes to speak on, though.
I'm interested in speaking about the Plant Moran Water, or the Plant Moran Annual annual audit for the city of Lathert Village, specifically in regards to the water audit. I provided the city administrator a copy of the PowerPoint. I don't know if she shared it with everyone or not.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's not a part of the agenda at this time.
Well, both, both, both the water meters as part of the budget are on the, are on the agenda. And the approval of the minutes regarding the audit report was also approved, so. I don't know, you don't have two and a half minutes, then tell me you don't want to hear about it.
What we can do is you can speak.
We're losing two hundred thousand gallons of water a day in the city. And if you don't want to hear about the research I've done on it, I'll, I'll bring it in a more appropriate forum.
Have the discussion at the next public comment, because that's not a part of the agenda right now.
At the end of the meeting.
At the end of the meeting.
Yeah, we definitely want to hear what you have to say, and we saw the presentation, we did get it, but it's at the end of the meeting.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak regarding any items that's on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, we'll go into the public hearing. First one up is the public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant Program Year 2022. City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor Garrett. And I'm trying to find the page in my packet.
Page ninety five, thank you.
This is the annual request for the Community Development Block Grant Program that we work with in partnership with Oakland County. And this year, the request is for, I'm still looking for the page. Seven thousand dollars. Seven thousand dollars. The project amount would be allocated for thirty five hundred dollars for senior services and thirty five hundred dollars for transportation services, primarily for our senior population.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak regarding the public hearing regarding the Community Development Black Grant?
Madam, and a mayor, I do want to make note that Haven did submit a letter, as they do each year, in regards to their request.
For Haven, though.
Yes, right.
We have Haven and the CBDG is two different ones, right?
Same.
Program that you can spend money on with your CBD grant.
And so they have a written public comment for it, so madam, city manager, go ahead if you'd like to read that. Or skim it.
I mean, it's been included and provided to council, it doesn't necessarily.
And it's in your, it's in your packet, and it looks like they were asking, their actual ask is for twenty five hundred dollars for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. And is for services that they provide for those who are subject of domestic violence and sexual assault.
Thank you.
Any other questions now?
Sure.
Is this the same money that was allocated towards the van?
Yes.
And is that thirty five hundred dollars again going to be going towards the van?
The van is paid for.
It is. Out of our funds.
If I might respond, Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
The van was paid for through a combination of Community Development Black Grant Dollars, Grant Dollars, as well as funding from SMART.
Okay.
Was in excess of twenty thousand from SMART.
Okay, and we took twenty thousand out of our budget to pay for it?
Whatever the balance was.
Okay. Okay, and what is that van used for?
It's primarily used for transportation for seniors for various programs that they participate in.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any public comments?
No hand raise.
Thank you. Posing the public hearing, going to action items for consideration and approval. The first one is for the Community Development Block Grant CBD application program year 2022. Who would like to make a motion for it? Suggesting motions at the bottom of page ninety seven.
I'll make a motion to adopt the tax resolution regarding the proposed use of the program year 2022 Community Development Black Grant Funds. Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Canaz.
Yes.
And Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next action item request for consideration or approval was RFP responses for the Real Estate Professional Service for the House, for the House and Woods property.
Mayor and council members, some of you may recall that we recently issued the RFP for real estate services relative to the sale of the property, commonly referred to as the House in the Woods property. We did receive two responses, those identified in your packet, one was CAC Real Estate Services. The other was Keller Williams with John Rude as the associate. Those responses were received by the clerk, myself, and Suzie Steck. Suzie Steck and I both scored the responses, and that information is provided in your packet. The highest score was Keller Williams, Rude Associates, and they are being recommended for your consideration.
Thank you. Would like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to award the bid for real estate services to Keller Williams slash Rude Associates for the House in the Woods property located at nine, one nine six zero zero Forest Drive. And authorize the city attorney to review, prepare, and prepare appropriate contract documents for council's consideration.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll, sorry, go ahead.
There's, I'm still wondering about the, in, in the comprehensive plan. This nine, nine home.
What page are you on? I'm sorry, it's, it's in the comprehensive plan.
That was a conceptual, just an idea that was prepared by the planning department. That was never a concrete, certified plan. One of the things that council had asked the planners to provide them was a couple of different options for that parcel. It's kind of been, we've been in a holding pattern since it burned down twelve, thirteen years ago, and we really haven't made much progress on it. So one, one of the things they were looking for were redevelopment possibilities. I say it was received unfairly would probably be an understatement. Yeah, it was a brainstorming idea that just never got any traction.
Okay, but it's still included in our July twenty twenty one master comprehensive plan? As an example, I don't, it doesn't, I'm not sure that says it's an example. And also, have the residents around that property been contacted about any of this? They've told me they haven't, so just. Just about the whole, just about the whole project, about the concept, the RFP.
That was part of, that was part of the comments that we received as we were going through the comprehensive plan process that we did hear from those residents and their concerns about the density of that project. But again, that was just presented as a concept for, to get people to think out of the box.
So then the ordinances would have to be changed as far as hundred fifty foot depth lots and that kind of thing?
Right now, it's zoned as R three cluster housing, so they can either, their options, and correction from Ron Scott, their options are to develop the property within the accordance of the standards already in the ordinance for under R three. They could do a condo development, or they could even possibly do, it can't be, it cannot be, so they could either do.
Zone the same, the homes that are there right now are condos.
Detached condos. The ordinance, the zoning ordinance has not changed for those, for those properties. So it's still zoned R three, and I believe that's what it was zoned when those homes were.
But it is a part, but it isn't part of that kind of development.
No, it is not a part of that kind of development. It's a separate, as my understanding.
And there, and just to add to the point, there was, and it may be time to revisit it again, but there was input solicited from the residents that were adjacent to that, but that's been about, you know, five years. And we got Pam probably, whatever, Pam and Kelly, like probably been five or six years since we did that. The time Andy Potter was the administrator, and he sought their input back with respect to what they desire to see there, whether to, there were ideas of, I don't know, I keep looking at them, but they were talking about like a tennis court or something, or pickleball or something like that, I think they had. And ultimately, I think the overwhelming sense is that the residents just wanted to be sold and turned into another resident, residential property. So they didn't really like the idea of utilizing it for something else that may attract or draw people in. And again, it's been, it's been a number of years since.
Wasn't the property deeded to the city and it was supposed to remain as a nature preserve?
No, the city took ownership of the property after the fire, because the, there was no, there was no, the bank had defaulted, they defaulted on the loan, so the bank wasn't going to pay for the demolition. So the city, in exchange for paying for the demolition, acquired the ownership of the property. There were no contingencies or requirements on their acquisition of it. And it has always been the desire of the council, the councils, I should say, to recoup those costs that were expended in, in not only the destruction of the home, but the maintenance of it there, there. There was a period of time where a group had offered or desired to turn it into a nature preserve. There was several different leaders of that group, but they never really got, in a lot of different designs and concepts, but none of it really ever came to fruition. My recollection was there's a lot of disagreement amongst the group members, the direction they wanted to go. And ultimately, city council, they were allocating, I believe it was five thousand dollars a year towards that group. Ultimately, they decided to, to no longer allocate those funds and move forward with marketing that property, and that's, that's kind of where we, how we've gotten to this point. Unfortunately, we haven't really had a whole lot of maybe, maybe it's a combination of a lack of interest and lack of effort on both parts, but trying to get trying to get someone that's interested in developing that property.
Yes, for reference, we're about, we're about ninety thousand dollars, if I remember correctly, in terms of the city's expenses.
More than that, yeah, but yeah, that's roughly. And, and also, wasn't, when they, when Potter pulled the neighbors, wasn't one of the options that was presented to them as well as possibly splitting up the? Yeah, that, and we're going to divide it up into twelve pie-shaped pieces and deed them all to the individuals. Again, that was not to, like anybody wanted to take on that responsibility.
So does it go into the, I mean, the condo development has a common area that is common to all of them, and they do own it, and it's in their deeds and whatever. I have one of these houses listed. So, you know, I guess I'd like to see the actual property, because then do they also get a piece of the center, or?
No, so unless it was included, so the condominium designation and development is typically, is just really a format that a builder or developer will use to, to organize a master deed for a series of parcels, so that there's common bylaws. Beyond that, that, you know, all of those streets are public streets in that area, that parcel is not included. I believe it was sold off by the original owner to that developer, who then created the district for the adjacent parcels.
Because they have to have, condo condominiums have to have a special mortgage and all kinds of things. It's not just a regular, I had suggested rezoning, all of that, because it's kind of a pain for owners of those homes to have to sell as a condo, because there's so many requirements to be able to sell, to be able to get a mortgage and all those kinds of things, so.
Kind of minimum designation, though, is not dependent upon the zoning, it's dependent upon the developer. So it could, it could be planted and developed as a subdivision or as a condominium. Oftentimes, developers go with the condominium route, and that's been a trend probably more so recently than previously, because it's easier for them to develop it.
Yeah, the detached condos were a big thing in the nineties in Michigan, like that was the way to go.
Not the best methodology, but that's kind of what we're stuck with, but it's, that's not that choice is not made by the city, it's made by the original developer.
And that could still be an option for someone else who comes in?
It could be. The most recent example, we had one, was over here where they, they balked on the idea of condominium, when they realized that they had to take additional steps, so. I, I haven't seen, I mean, the city hasn't had a whole lot of development of a substantial size. I don't anticipate that this parcel would, someone would develop it as a condominium, they always could, but it's, it's pretty unlikely, because realistically, you might get one or two, you know, homes out of that property. And that's, I think, kind of what the council was hoping to get, was maybe some feedback from a Realtor that had an idea or had. We just haven't, except we just haven't had that.
Well, the city, I didn't really think there was a vision for the property, because I know when the first RFP went out, I, as a Realtor read it, and it was like, I don't even know, what are you, what are you looking for? What, what do you want? So I think it's been tweaked.
The initial RFP went out, was, was trying to actually solicit ideas. We were, the city was looking for individuals to come to the city with a concept. You know, again, something like what the planners prepared, again, that's, that's what the city was looking for, but just different concepts, different ideas and uses for that property.
Okay.
Again, didn't happen, and then the decision was made by the council, totally, just list the property, let the market decide what would go there. And I think you had maybe one offer that was received for a very small amount, less than half of what the city's expenditures outstanding were. So, and again, I think there was, you know, maybe a little disconnect with the.
Yeah, there were some other issues.
Which council brought up previously, so.
Okay, thank you.
Hoping that maybe this be the, this be the time.
Um, is there any further questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor. Council member Canaz. Council member Miller.
No.
And Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next up, we have the professional services contract with Hubble, Roth and Clark. Environmental engineering services for MS four and storm water permit requirements.
Thank you, Mary, Mayor Garrett. Um, this is regards to the services that we receive from Hubble, Roth and Clark. They are an environmental engineering, um, contracted firm. And they assist us as indicated with our, um, MS four permit and a number of other environmental permits, specifically the storm water permit requirements that are required by the, uh, Michigan Eagle Department. So this would be to officially contract with them for providing those support services.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a proposal from Hubble, Roth and Clark, uh, for environmental engineering, uh, and storm water requirements in the amount uh, of seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars in authorized, and they're to sign the agreement and any, any related documents.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Is, is this an increase from, from last year or same?
It's in the same ballpark. Um, there was some additional work, I think, in regards to the MS four project.
Right.
Any further questions? Roll call please.
Roll call, Mayor Pro Tim Cantor. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Council member Canaz.
Yes.
Council member Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
And council member Jennings.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Now we'll have the first reading amendment to the storm water management ordinance, chapter thirty, article two.
The city administrators like to, but basically, um, EDLE provided us with language that they wanted for storm water management, and then they're updating that and making changes, uh, with respect to the standards that are currently set by Oakland County. So that's what, uh, this is, if, if for the benefit of new council members, um, adoption of ordinances, there's a first reading and then second reading of a subsequent news. So the, the motion would be to approve the first, for the requested motion tonight would be to approve the first reading of the amendment, uh, and schedule for a second, we, second reading at your December meeting.
I would like to approve the first reading of the amendment to the storm water management ordinance.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved in seconds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Roll call. Council member Canaz.
Yes.
Council member Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Council member Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We're now going to the administrator's report.
Thank you. And, um, with your permission, I'd like to first just provide kind of a summary of our, our year review to give you some highlights. It's, um, it's been an exceptional two years, I would say. Um, just being in the COVID environment and still maintaining operations. So, um, we have a phenomenal team with our administration, our consultants, our elected leaders. So I did not want to miss an opportunity to just relatively briefly highlight some of our accomplishments. For one, we, we maintain the safe workplace. We have not had any outbreaks based on the, um, the people who will work here or are visiting our building. We made every effort to keep everyone safe. In light of the communic- um, the communicable diseases that are present, we've made some modifications to our operations. We have the municipal meetings which, um, everyone's participating in today, and, um, for the first time, we are also simultaneously being available on Zoom as well as live streaming on Facebook. We have, um, in addition, our website has been refreshed. We have the ability for staff to make those updates instantaneously, which is a, um, tremendous, um, resource instead of having to contact IT person to be making those updates. Social media is far more robust than it ever was. There's ups, updates constantly. Our meetings, I, I'll link there through the YouTube videos. See Click Fix, I was honestly res- resistant to spending the money for, for that particular platform. Um, but it is really catching on and people are using it. It's a mechanism for us to track the work orders as well as for residents to be kept informed in terms of the status of their inquiries for service. The e-newsletter, which is going out every single week. And thank you, Corey, for taking the yeoman's part of that off of my plate. But we have over, um, thirteen hundred weekly subscribers. So in terms of getting information out, this is a tremendous tool for our residents. The sanitary retention tank, you're welcome Pamela, is now under a negotiated agreement with Oakland County Water Resource Commissioner for the operations and maintenance, and the bond will allow for the future upgrades as we become part of the system. The chapter twenty drain system, relative to increasing our capacity and which will hopefully result in fewer, um, basements being, um, filled with undesirable items. Point and pay, um, part of what we did as we were trans- um, transitioning to doing more things online. People are now able to get permits online as well as pay for them, schedule their inspections. Utility bills are viewable online, just so you can see your water bill, you can see the history and you can make the payments online. You can see your usage. We have the approval of the, um, the five million in grants for the street improvement projects as well as the five million approximately for the water and capital improvement projects, and those are moving forward. And I don't want to take Bruce's, um, um, opportunity, but if you look at the details of what has been accomplished, it's really amazing. Netrix is a financial transparency information, um, system that makes available the financials of the city online. And we have a financial rating of zero, which is actually the highest score you can get relative to your financial um, stability of a community. Special events, we've had the sixty-fifth anniversary, we've had the Caribbean Fest, we've had ladies and leadership program. New things that we brought to the community. We also had the, um, summer student interns and Councilman Jennings, I know that you're very interested in that. So we've had college students and high school students assisting the administration, parks and recreation and the DDA. And we look forward to keeping, um, that type of support going on. The recreation van, as was mentioned previously, was acquired and it primarily supports our senior programming trips and transportation, and our seniors absolutely love their outings. We do have some challenges in getting drivers. And you only need a regular driver's license and a check of your driving record in order to drive the van. So we're looking for volunteers for anyone who wants to escort our seniors on some of their day trips. We also have had a major expansion in regards to diversity, equity and inclusion. We've had the Dr. King Celebration, the African American History Month Celebration, Diversity Champion Awards and the Juneteenth Celebration. Relative to our departments, we've had performance measures instituted, and you'll be getting a final update on those at your December meeting. The police contracts were successfully negotiated as well as, um, negotiating favorable terms with the Southfield Fire Dispatch and EMS Services, because if you recall, they wanted to, they offered the opportunity to significantly increase the cost to us. But we were able to negotiate that to be just a standard two percent increase. And there have been, um, just significant grants because we're also often getting information in regards to what do we need to do to support grant efforts. But I want to say that our existing staff has been exceptional in their application and successful, um, receipt of grant dollars. And we already know that we're going to get the four hundred thousand in the American, um, Recovery Program Act dollars, the two hundred thousand, thank you to our state representative Bolden and Senator.
Jeremy Moss.
Thank you, Jeremy Moss, for the Michigan Enhancement Grant, West Melvirus, um, grant from Oakland County that have fallen off the wayside, and we're now getting that annually, the local road improvement grant. Working with the state currently on the drinking water asset management grant for over two hundred thousand dollars. They just contacted us this past week. In regards to that opportunity and over a million dollars at least in other grant opportunities. So having said that, I feel that the city is on very solid foundation. And we're moving forward in, um, at tremendous speed, but with all due diligence and with accountability, and more than anything, I think we have such a solid team here. And you're right, it is a family. And I'm so proud of each and every one of you. And at this moment, I must share my document that's in your packet. It has truly been an honor to work with you, your council colleagues and our amazing team here in the city of Latha Village for the past three and a half years. Over the time, we have made tremendous strides in improving operations and building a solid foundation for the future. To confirm our conversation, Mayor Garrett, please accept this communication as my official notice of my resignation. In accordance with my contract, I'm providing thirty days' notice with the last date of employment being December eighteenth. Thank you all for this phenomenal privilege of serving as your city administrator for the city of Latha Village. It's a great community, is a great place to live and it is an amazing place to work and call home. And of course, I will be available however I can to support the transition. Thank you.
Thank you. City attorney.
Or is that? Uh, I did just want to, um, really briefly for the new council members, we, we will be doing a council orientation that, at our next study session meeting, it will be more in-depth, um, on some of the key things that you need to be aware of. But just for tonight, between now and then, just a couple of things to be aware of. Probably one of the biggest things is what, what's called the Open Meetings Act, and that requires that all discussion and deliberation. Basically, this is like the Cliff Notes written, but all discussion and deliber- deliberation, where there's a core of a council, those three council members present have to be conducted at an open meeting. So that applies to emails, telephone calls, social gatherings. And if you find yourself between now and our study session in a situation where you're with three other council or two other, yourself and two other council members, don't talk about anything that may come up, uh, in front of the city because that could be a violation of the Open Meetings Act. Uh, two other things, one, one with respect to FOIA, everybody should have a city-operated email that's up and running now. Please use that for all city business. If, if you use personal emails for city business, then you're, you're potentially subjecting your personal email and device to, uh, search and FOIA request and record, so. Uh, please utilize your city emails and your city devices once those are provided to you. Lastly, with respect to social media, and I don't know if the, so the city's social media policy has been shared with you, but the same restrictions would apply to that, um, and it may be even more so. You have to be very vigilant about what's posted on social media. Residents now, you're now council members, you're, you're acting on behalf of the city, whether you, you think you are or not. So it's very important that, if you see other kind of, I always advise council members not to comment, um, on issues especially issues that are coming before council, not to comment on what they're posting on Facebook. One, if, if you do, it requires that the city archive that in every comment, uh, which we looked into. It's very, very, very expensive because things on Facebook don't tend to stay there. People will post it, remove it. But that's something that the city has to constantly monitor and back up, uh, again, and a great cost to the city. So I strongly encourage not posting on social media, and if you do, if you see that another member of council, uh, can't pick on either anymore. Uh, if another member of council has posted on something, don't chime in, don't, you know, because that just makes it more likely that one more individual might, and then now we're having a discussion about something that's, is going to become before council or potentially could come before council, and it's not being done at an open meeting, so. Those are just some cautionary things, and again, we'll go with a bit more depth on this stuff, um, at our next meeting. If you have any questions, you all should have my cell phone number, and I'll give it to you before we leave tonight. Uh, feel free to call me and ask any questions.
I have a question for, you know. Um, I was reading the Open Meetings Act and, um, as of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, you'd only have Zoom meetings if you had a medical reason or a military reason. I saw that we have a local state of emergency in Latha Village. But I wasn't, that was enacted in April twenty twenty, but I didn't see anything where that was extended, what, you know, what was allowing these kinds of meetings to be able to happen? Um, even the big, big, um, vote on marijuana dispensaries on July twenty-sixth, there were two city council members that were remote. Um, they didn't state what the reasons were for being remote. I don't think they were military, I don't, might have been medical, but.
So that, that is subject to local, to, uh, local states of emergency. The city has, the city of Latha Village had declared a local state of emergency based on the COVID nineteen numbers and proximity to the city that that has remained. And as Cheryl indicated, out of an abundance of caution, the city has utilized, uh, Zoom technology. So it was extended, it was permitted, I believe, starting next year, you're correct. It would require members of active military or personal illness, uh, to be permissible to participate in a meeting remotely. You probably should ask, uh, Rep Bolden about that, but I do, um, it wouldn't surprise me if there was an extension on that or, or allow us to make for, for more remote type meeting participation.
Where is our declaration of emergency posted and what are their formulas used or there? Like there was a event Friday, I don't believe there were masks worn, I don't know if there was a limit on the number of people. You know, where is it put in to place and where, where's, uh, where can I access that Latha Village Declaration of Local of Emergency?
And I can make it available to you.
Okay, thank you.
We have it. Any further questions? Um, that was the city attorneys. Reports from boards, commissions, committees.
I have two. Um, one short, one, I'll try to make not so long since it's, I know it's getting late, but there's a lot to, not to cover. Um, first one from the planning commission. Um, we're currently working on a ordinance. We have draft language for an ordinance for electric vehicle charging stations. Um, so we're currently working on that, and, uh, if anybody, uh, is interested in providing input to that, you know, we have another meeting coming up, we'll be talking about it, uh, in, in the December meeting. Also, um, we talked at our last meeting about starting to work on developing uh, uh, and ordinance for solar, so implementation of solar guidelines, um, and so forth. So we're at the very beginning stages of that, but there's a lot to consider, a lot to consider there. And again, anybody who's interested in providing input should attend our, um, December meeting. Uh, then the second board is the, um, uh, infrastructure committee. And we're, we're pretty much at the end of our first year of, of two major projects. One is the road project, the second one is the capital improvement uh, projects, and I've got a lot of really, really good news to report, um, from our, our, our last meeting. Uh, starting out with the road project, uh, we finished the twenty twenty-one road project. We did about two point one miles of, of, of repaving. Uh, the budgeted cost for that was about one and a half million dollars. Uh, we had a great bid and we didn't use all of our contingency that we had planned on. Our actual cost was just under a hundred thousand dollars. So we have almost five hundred thousand dollars, um, uh, under budget for year one. And the great news is if we, um, maintain that or, you know, break even, don't have any major overages. any major overages in the next two years, which we're obviously not planning on, then we'll be able to move into a year or four for the road project. So we'll be able to do more than just the, probably significantly more than just the seven miles, 7.1 miles, I believe it was, that we had budgeted. In 2022, we'll be doing 2.6 miles. We're currently working on the recommendation for the 20 to 23 roads, 20 to 22 roads were already approved, but we do have a couple of additions that we want to make to that, so that'll, that'll come through in the recommendation that the Infrastructure Committee sends to this body, hopefully around the January timeframe, so that they can begin, the engineers can begin working on some of the engineering. And then in 2023, we'll have 3.3 miles of resurfacing to do, and then hopefully we'll be able to move in, as I said, to a 2024. As far as the capital improvement bond goes, breaking that down by category, we did two streets water mains this year, Wiltshire and San Rosa, we did 2,000 linear feet of water main that was budgeted for $475,000. And right now, we still, we do have a few invoices left to come in, but we're at $275,000. So it looks like the water mains are going to be significantly under budget. As far as 2022 goes, we'll be doing Golden Gate from 11 Mile all the way up to California, so that's the water main project, a pretty substantial project for 2022. Fire hydrants, we replaced 39 fire hydrants, and we repaired two fire hydrants. Again, we came in under budget there, we were expecting $182,000 of cost, the actual came in at $105,000, so we're a little more than $75,000 under budget. In 2022 and 2023, we'll be doing 40 more fire hydrants each of those years. As far as the gate valves go, and not everybody knows what gate valves are, but basically those are the valves that are used to turn off the water, the water mains, when we have a water main break or need to do repairs. And the problem that we have as a city is most of those don't work, they're put into the twenties and designed to last 50 years. So the idea was this year, we were going to work on 51 of those and do a lot of replacements. And what had actually ended up happening was instead of having to replace a lot of those, the engineers were able, or the, well, I guess the engineers were able to do refurbishments, which are significantly cheaper than having to cut out and replace the gate valve. So we had budgeted $320,000 for the 50 or so gate valves that we're going to do this year. The refurbishments only cost us $15,000 so far. So again, great news there. 2022, the plan is to do 54 more, and 2023, we'll do another 54 to help get those gate valves, gate valve systems working. Excavations, so this is where we have been digging up near the sidewalk in the Front Lawn Junction, where we dig down five feet to visually inspect the material going into the stop box, which is used to turn water on and off to the home, so we have to look at the pipe that's coming in and the pipe that's coming out. When we originally put the bond out, we were required by Eagle to do roughly 1,600 homes in Lathua Village, so we had budgeted about $1.16 million for this particular project. Sometime after we started to work, Eagle, getting a lot of pushback from cities, changed their methodology, so we didn't have to do every single home, but rather had to do the statistical sampling, and that was a random sampling. And so we only have to do 315 homes, so that alone should cut about $800,000 off of the amount that we were supposed to do for excavations. But again, the good news is for the 132 that we did this year, we had budgeted just about $100,000, and it came in about $50,000. So again, $50,000 of savings there. And then in 2022, we'll do another 183 of those. Should note for the residents, you know, we did run late into the season, so you realize that there is some landscaping repair that needs to be done that couldn't be done in the fall, and we'll be taking care of that in the spring. So we didn't forget about your, the weather doesn't really permit us to do the landscaping repair right now. As far as lead lines go, we budgeted, or we actually had 15 lead lines that we had to replace in Phase 1 and Phase 2 this summer. We budgeted $75,000, the actual there was $94,000, so we're actually about $19,000 over budget. But the good news is, you know, we estimated that over the next three years, we would have to do 100 of these, and we've only had to do 15 so far, but then here comes the advertisement and the plug. But the issue that we have is we have to visually inspect all homes in Lathua at the water meter. Only 25% of our residents have done the process, which is advertised in our town, it's on the weekly, every week in the weekly newsletter. So we really, really, really are asking our residents, it's a very simple process, it takes about five minutes, it doesn't require any expertise, you just have to go down into your basement by the water meter and follow the instructions, if you go to the website or any of those publications that I mentioned, it gives instructions on how to do it, and then forward that information onto the city so that we know whether or not, you know, you have lead or copper or galvanized pipe, and we know what we need to do. So initially, the good news is that we've done significantly fewer than we thought we would have to do, but we still have three quarters of our residents who still have to do the, do the test.
Bruce, there are some residents that are having problems doing that on the survey, and so if you call the water department, we would send somebody out to look at it for you. We would put in a work order, and then one of our DPS gentlemen would come out and look at it for you, but that is to, they would be, have to be allowed into your house. I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, and that's a good point, because the, 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 the big reason for, especially during COVID times, pandemic times, the big reason for asking people to do the self-test is so that we don't have to bring somebody into your house, you know, and put the residents and the worker at potential risk. And, and there's also a cost for us to do that, just have to send somebody out to every house and, you know, spend 10 minutes or five minutes at each house. So, yeah, so we urge you to do, do those, those tests and call the water department if you have issues. Water meters, we're currently working on a bid to replace the water meters. I know Mr. Tamorelli has had some public comment about that, and, but going out to bid, hopefully in the next month or so, so maybe with a spring start day of water meter replacements. And then I came up earlier, I think Cheryl mentioned that the retention tank that we have over on 11 Mile and Evergreen, we've got about $500,000 of repairs to essentially, and upgrades to essentially allow us to double the flow rate out of that tank, which makes it significantly less likely that you'll have sewage backups in the basement. Those $500,000 of repair start from the spring, correct?
That's what they're anticipating, they have to finalize the contract.
Right.
Being Oakland County.
So in summary, you know, it's, it's pretty much great news all around. We're, we're, we're finding that we're coming in under budget on a lot of these projects, and then taking even a bigger step back. I mean, we've done a lot of work this summer. Like I said, two, two miles of roads, water mains, fire hydrants, gate valves, all these excavations, lead line replacements. It's a ton of work, and, and, and the residents have been great about it for the most part, and the projects have gone relatively smoothly, and so I want to thank everybody involved. And my report.
Thank you. Have any unfinished or new business? So I'll jump down to public comment, which will be for two minutes. Have anybody for public comment? Come on in. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So my name is Jason Hammond, I live at 27590 California Southeast. While I could have attended this meeting via Zoom and submitted my comments written, it is important to me to provide to council these comments in person. It won't be a surprise to anyone to hear that this year's council, the city council election was the most contentious in my almost 19 years as a resident of Lathua Village. I saw and heard about many occasions where neighbors treated each other with disrespect. But conversely, because of this election, I also became friends with wonderful people who I lived near for years and never had enough time to speak with in person. I bring these things up because I want to highlight that we have a choice to continue the behavior that separates us and creates division, or we can continue the behavior that brings us together. The city council has the opportunity to set the example for the rest of Lathua Village by respectfully working through differences of opinion and being transparent and respectful in their communication with city employees, with residents, and with each other. I hope this council will focus on working together to set that example for the entire city. I want to thank Dr. Mitchell for her amazing service as the city administrator of Lathua Village for three and a half years, her professionalism, her experience, the time she put into her job, and her effort was an incredible benefit to our city. I'm very sad to see her go. Lathua Village is poor for losing her and her dedication to our city. I hope we can find a new city administrator with half the expertise, experience, and professionalism she brought to our city. I'm sure the opportunity before Dr. Mitchell is a great one, but I also know that the disrespectful way she was treated by residents and council members played a part in her decision. The 2021, 2023 city council is off to a poor start, when the first major thing they accomplished is getting the current city administrator to resign. It's a shame that the great working relationship Dr. Mitchell had with previous city councils was unable to continue with the 21, 23 council. I'm curious to see how this council finds candidates for the city administrator role, how it evaluates the candidates, and how it includes input from city employees as well as residents in the process. It is important for residents to be considered first, but this is not a zero-sum game, there's a room to provide good service for residents and also make our city a place where people want to work. That starts with the city council treating the city administrator with respect and should then become part of the culture of respect modeled by the city administrator for the city's employees. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Minister Tamorelli?
Great, thank you. I trust you can hear me. You have in front of me a presentation. I think we have a great opportunity to better serve every Lathua Village resident. I listened closely to the 2021 Lathua Village Annual Audit Report as presented by Plant Moran at the November 1st council meeting. They described our water loss situation, and I began an extensive research of my own. Something undetermined happened in 2017. Both our water loss rate and our build volume were constant before this unknown event happened, then significantly jumped during 2017 and has continued since then. We have a big loss that cannot easily be explained by simultaneous small meter failures in our homes, 200,000 gallons a day. This accounts for a big financial loss for every resident. According to the report, $1.4 million of lost revenue. The losses are explained as a series of small losses, such as mismetering in every home, water main breaks, and planned hydrant flushing. The evidence points to a single big event. I suggest from either mismetering on our main meter or a large undetected leak flowing into a sewer or runoff basin. If it's a SAWA water meter issue, we may be able to secure a large refund. If it's a big leak, let's find it and fix it and save money every day. I propose to perform two simple, low-cost tests done by a third party to verify the results. That's on page eight of your report. Also, let's wait before authorizing bond money to be spent on replacing all meters in the city. I'm willing to share the results of my research with the city council, the infrastructure subcommittee, and our city administration. This opportunity to determine, to determine the cause of our water loss would be a win-win for both residents and our city. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Can you, hopefully you'll be able to attend our next Infrastructure Committee? I did look at your, your presentation, and there's some good ideas in there, and we should talk about them as, as a group.
I look forward to it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak publicly?
No hands raised at this time.
Thank you. We'll move on to mayor and council comments. Let the council go first. Anyone have any comments?
I'd just like to congratulate all the new council members and welcome them, and forward to doing great things together in the groups.
Here, here. Anyone else?
I'll say, thank you. I would like to thank the residents for choosing this council. I would like to thank everyone at this table. I hope we all can work together and get things done. I'm looking forward to the new year, and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I just want to thank people who supported me. I would like to reiterate the commitments that I made during my campaign. One of the things was bringing the community back together, respecting each other, communicating, listening, and putting residents at the center of everything we do. Respect begets respect, and a lot of the issues that will surface during the campaign came from here, actually. So I too hope that we will be able to work together, and we all love Lathua Village and ready to get to work.
Thank you.
I mean, thank, congratulations to everybody who got elected and re-elected, and thank you to everybody in the sitting. Put your faith in us, and we won't let you down.
Um, thank you, everyone that came out tonight and, and went through the whole process of this election. Like everyone else has said, this is, this was a very tumultuous election period, and I, and I hope and pray that everything that was brought up that can be put, put aside, so we all can come together and work together. On a side note, again, I am overwhelmed with the, the outpouring of love and support during this, at this time personally. It was amazing to me, and it didn't go unnoticed. So I appreciate that, and that's what a village is about. That's what the city is about, and it proved it to me. So I look forward to moving forward and forward to moving forward, and really just, you know, coming together and making the city even better than what it was before. And if there is no any, if there are no other comments, then I would take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Move in second, and we are adjourned. Have a good night.